I now call the Monday, November 13th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. At this time, I'll invite Pastor Bob up to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much today for the many blessings that you pour out in our lives and the opportunity, dear God, to live for you. We thank you for the opportunity of living in this beautiful place. We thank you, dear God, for your blessings upon this town, upon those who are here. We just pray, dear God, that you will guide us today. We pray for each of the commissioners as they deliberate this evening. We pray for those who have come to participate in this process. We just ask, Father, that in everything that we would do tonight, that it would bring glory and honor to you. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for your direction, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Commissioner Roberts, would you please sign the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Got it? Becky, go ahead and call the board, please.
Commissioner Rutherford, absent. Commissioner Dreeves?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Dusky?
Here.
Commissioner Yater?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Here. Good evening. My name is Matt Zurcher, and I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this evening's deliberations on hearing items. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Council in reviews, planning, and zoning issues, and forwards recommendations regarding those important issues to the Council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission initially has reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It is at this point I will then open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, and this evening I am going to be exercising my prerogative to confine public comment to five minutes per person, and since there appears to be some significant public involvement here this evening. Some rules of the decorum this evening: please turn off your cellphones or put them on vibrate or silent. There will be no clapping. And we'll move forward. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the October 9th, 2017 meeting.
I'll make a move on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any announcements? No announcements, and there are no public hearing items, so we'll go right into our action items this evening. First item on the agenda, and we'll be hearing them both at the same time, PDP 17-009, Upon the Application of Stone Ridge Land Investments LLC, A Request for a Preliminary Development Plan Comprising Twenty-Four Single Family Lots for Stone Ridge Unit Eight on Approximately Eight-Acre Parcel Located West of the Intersection of Lucky Draw Drive and Cloud Cliff Pass in Amending the Corresponding Portions of the Sedona-- excuse me, Stone Ridge Master Plan. Also, number two, PDP 17-010, Upon the Application of Stone Ridge Land Investments LLC, A Request for Preliminary Development Plan Comprising Ten Single Family Lots for Stone Ridge Unit Eight-B on Approximately Three-Acre Parcel Located South of Cloud Cliff Pass, Approximately Three Hundred Feet East of Trader Trail in Amending the Corresponding Portions of the Stone Ridge Master Plan. Presenting this evening is Planner Joe Scott. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The map here shows the locations of the requested applications, and what is now referred to as Unit Eight was originally called Villas Three, and really, the terms are synonymous with each other if the term was-- either term were to come up. On the first Stone Ridge Master Plan for Mix of Three Thousand Fifty-Three Residential Units and Lots was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission August 10th, 1998, and the rezoning approved on August 26th, 1999. The first Two Hundred Forty-Nine Lots for Unit One developed in 2001. In 2002, developers requested an amendment to the preliminary development plan, and the zoning map change had put Unit Two an alternative site, and that request was approved by the commission October 14th, 2002, and council November 7th, 2002. In 2004, the developers requested a revised master plan, preliminary development plan and rezoning to reflect the 2002 amendments and to relocate parcels for multifamily uses and to include the community recreation and commercial lots close to the core area south of Old Black Canyon Highway. This was the time, the 2004 approval, and this preliminary development plan shows the two subject parcels that are zoned for multifamily residential, and which also allows for single-family residential at this location, and that was since 2004. At that time, the number of allowed multifamily units remained the same, but some smaller lots intended for attached townhome product replaced with some larger lots in demand at the time. Actual number of residential lots was reduced by Two Hundred Twenty-One units from Three Thousand Fifty-Three to Two Thousand Eight Hundred Thirty-Two. Again, the revised master plan, PDP shown here, and the rezoning was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission April 12th, 2004, and the council on May 27th, 2004. Of the Two Thousand Eight Hundred Thirty-Two approved residential units, eleven hundred seventy-four lots have been planted for single-family attached and detached housing And this is the portion of the approved and adopted the Stone Ridge Master Development Plan. For the indicating the subject parcel for Unit Eight was approved for One Hundred Twenty-Four Multifamily Units, and the subject parcel for Unit Eight-B was approved for Forty-Two Multifamily Units. Proposed preliminary development plan, PDP 1709, then reflects a reduction of One Hundred Residential Units on the subject eight-acre parcel, and the proposed preliminary development plan, 17010, reflects a reduction of Thirty-Two Residential Units on the subject three-acre parcel. There still is approval of pre-declaration water rights for the original Three Thousand Fifty-Three Lots that can be added with the approval of a revised master plan and concurrent rezoning at a future time. Both parcels, again, are Zone R2PAD, which is residential multiple dwelling units, which allows by right R1L, single-family limited uses by right. This is the preliminary development plan for Unit Eight and for Eight-B. Again, the Unit Eight parcel is adjacent to developed Unit Five, as indicated here. Unit Five was developed in 2004 and included a multi-use path on the east side located within a forty-foot greenbelt tract. In order to retain rock formations and reduce grading, the proposed Twenty-Four Lots are located on upper elevations of the site, with the westerly row of lots backing up to the forty-foot greenbelt and trail, which separates them from Unit Five residences. Average lot size of the Twenty-Four Lots is about Five Thousand Square Feet. The setbacks are five foot on the side, fifteen foot in the rear, and twenty in the front. The proposed lots have a variation of elevations with a difference of about seventeen feet from the highest lot, 931, to the lowest lot, lots 937 through 942. Proposed lots adjacent to the greenbelt and Unit Five are anywhere from ten feet lower or ten feet to one feet lower than adjacent lots developed in Unit Five. Unit Eight-B is generally flat, and the ten proposed lots average about Nine Thousand Square Feet and is all the same roughly pad elevations. All residences in both units are going to be single-story. Neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant September 7th, 2017, with all owners within One Thousand Feet being contacted by first-class mail. Signage sheets indicate about eighty-two persons in attendance. A summary of the meeting was prepared and provided as Exhibit G. At the time of the meeting, the first plan for Unit Eight was for Twenty-Nine Lots, with Twenty-Two Lots on the upper portion adjacent to Unit Five, and seven larger lots in the lower portion by the intersection of Lucky Draw and Cloud Cliff Pass. Staff have provided letters and emails in opposition to the draft plans, and also in support of developing single-family residences instead of apartments and retaining more open space, rock formations, and vegetation. Most opposition is from Unit Five owners on the east side of Trader Trail. Some have stated the original owners paid lot premiums, but staff has not determined what that was specifically for, and has been indicated by the town attorney that purchasers would be the ones to enforce whatever underlying agreements may have been involved as to what sellers would do to preserve views or their benefits. Based on comments received at the meeting, the applicant revised the Unit Eight plan to a total of Twenty-Four Lots, and a new letter was sent out with revised plan to original property owners within One Thousand Foot, indicating that they were adding additional ten-foot buffer area between the existing tract and the lots, and add additional depths of various amounts. Many of the lower lots proposed were taken out of the plan, and many of the native rock formations have been preserved due to the elimination of the larger lots down below. Since report was set out, I've had a few comments and questions regarding fencing open space and the intersection and construction, possible blasting. The-- I will be suggesting an amended condition when we get to the approval. That Public Works will sign off on the intersection location and site visibility or otherwise require traffic engineer analysis prior to approval of final development plan. Again, they were asked about fencing. Fencing is intended to be on the rear of the indicated lots, and asking about there will be no blasting, I was told from the engineer and developer. There will be some hammering, which will be noisy but will not have any impact, has been done in other areas for years without negative consequences, and that the engineer and any contractors would be responsible and liable for the work they perform. So again, to review, both proposed preliminary plans for single-family residents are allowed by right in the R2PAD district. The concurrent master plan was approved-- the current master plan was approved in 2004, provides the basis for development and densities of the Stone Ridge planned area development. PDP 1709 represents an approximately eighty percent reduction in density, and PDP 17010 an approximately seventy-five percent reduction in density. That was what was allowed by right per the approved master plan and the existing zoning for multifamily apartments. The property was never indicated for open space, was clearly intended for development at higher intensities with possible structures up to Thirty-Five Feet in Height. Existing path and additional ten feet provided between the new lots provides a fifty-foot buffer and screening between Unit Five and Unit Eight residences, and all structures will be single-story. Proposed land uses are appropriate within the Stone Ridge PAD at this location. With that, staff recommends approval of PDP 1709 and 17010 by an ask that be acted on by separate motion with a recommending conditions of approval and adding Condition D, again, that Public Works will sign off on the intersection location and site visibility or otherwise require a traffic engineer analysis prior to approval of a final development plan. With that, I'm available for any questions. Representative of the applicant, Stone Ridge Land Investments LLC, Mike Richards, is available if you have any questions.
Okay. At this time, does anyone from the commission have questions of staff? All right. Then I'd ask the applicant to come up.
This design is something that's gone through a couple of iterations. We had our initial meeting with the community a couple of weeks back, and there was some pushback regarding rock formations and a few other things, so we took another shot at it with the intent of trying to, you know, to get everybody as happy as we could with it, and we're pretty happy with the way it came out. I know everybody's not happy, and unfortunately, you can't always make everybody happy, but we're pretty happy with the way it came out. I think it's going to be a great addition to Stone Ridge, and certainly willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone on the commission have a question of Mr. Richards?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Again, we're going to be keeping a time limit, five minutes per person. I'd ask that kind of if you want to speak, please just make a line down the middle aisle here. When you come up to the mic, please speak into the microphone. State your first and last name. If you want, you can say where you live, that's fine, but again, five minutes per person. We'll start with you, sir.
My name is Chuck Harlow. I live at 7582 East Trader's Trail in Stone Ridge, and I'm representing several of our homeowners adjacent to the proposed Units Eight and Eight-A, many who are not able to attend this meeting tonight. Our home is located on the north end of East Trader's Trail and sits directly on the other side of the walking path where the proposed Twenty-Four Lot Housing Tract and cul-de-sac on Unit Eight is proposed and near Unit Eight-B where the ten small villa-style tract homes and cul-de-sac are proposed. We bought our home in 2015 and moved to the Stone Ridge community. Reason we chose to live there is because the development was beautifully designed and sat in the majestic Bradshaw Mountains with views of Mingus Mountain and had beautiful walking paths with lots of options for some great hiking, which we enjoy. Our home was listed by Gabriella Watts, a real estate agent with West USA of Prescott. She is also a representative for Univest and Tom Lowe and works in the Stone Ridge sales office. She clearly identified our property and house as a view property and with views. In 2015, before we purchased our home, neither Gabriella nor the previous homeowner disclosed any plans for future construction behind our home, and we would not have purchased our home if we had known a row of small tract homes and a street were planned to be constructed directly behind our lot. We visited the Stone Ridge sales office to try to determine if there were plans for the natural open space behind our home, since our purchase would result in a premium of Twenty to Twenty-Five Thousand Dollars more than other homes of the same model without the views. We were told by the Stone Ridge sales office that the parcel was undergoing a rezoning, and eventually, there would be some homes built on the land. When we asked specifics, they told us they did not know the details. We knew the beautiful walking path existed. We looked around the area. We saw the surrounding parcel on Cloud Cliff Pass, Lucky Draw, Blacksmith Circle, all had semi-custom or custom homes built in the area, and with the beautiful path, we figured that the environment would be kept the same, and we assumed that other homes may be built back there someday, which would match the semi-custom homes, not small tract homes. So we ended up buying it, and the construction of these high-density tract houses will block the views of Mingus Mountains, the golf course for all ten homeowners who paid significant lot premiums for these views. And I don't know what you call this in Arizona, but in Southern California, where I moved from, this would be considered deception, misrepresentation, non-disclosure, and violation of an implied contract. If this plan is approved, the existing nine homes on Trader's Trail will lose their views, while many of these proposed new houses will gain the views that we originally purchased when we bought our homes. And we are not opposed to custom or semi-custom homes being built and beautifully placed on both of these parcels. We are opposed to the installation of a high-density tract of small homes and the installation of additional streets or cul-de-sacs so close to the existing homes because of the following points. It will destroy our views, and all of us paid significant premiums for the views, and the loss of our views will reduce our home values. It will destroy the sweeping views and much of the environment for all Stone Ridge residents who enjoy the walking paths of this longest contiguous and beautiful section of the pathway in Stone Ridge. Univest's plan to install the cul-de-sacs that intersect with Cloud Cliff Pass on a hill with a curve creates a major safety problem. This plan will result in visibility problems, blind spots, and increased traffic for the existing streets of Trader's Trail and for the custom homes on Cloud Cliff Pass. The proposed tract of homes and lots are significantly smaller and do not complement the existing homes on Trader's Trail or the adjacent custom and semi-custom homes. The ten existing homes on the east side of Trader's Trail and Cloud Cliff Pass have an average size of over Three Thousand Square Feet. The proposed homes on Unit Eight are expected to be Seventeen Hundred to Twenty-One Hundred Square Feet, and the lots directly behind East Trader's Trail will only be fifty feet wide with minimal side yards. If these smaller proposed homes are installed per plan, they will significantly reduce the existing adjacent home values due to their close proximity. And I'd like to refer you to the ordinances. There's three ordinances I identify for planned area developments. Ordinance 13-19-60E2, The Values of the Existing Properties Adjacent to This Plan Will Be Adversely Affected Based on the Loss of Views, Personal Well-Being, and Home Values.
Time, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just do my summary here. We're asking for your understanding and concern regarding our existing homes and beautiful community as you consider the grading, lot placement, and future homes to maintain the desirability of the Stone Ridge community. The proposal as presented degrades the values of existing adjacent homes and significantly diminishes the natural beauty of the walking path and environment. We ask you to reconsider the impact this proposal has on our home values, disruption of our lives, and our quality of life as Stone Ridge residents. The proposed plans in these locations do not enhance--
Thank you, sir.
--or complement the existing, and--
Sir, I got to cut you off because you're going well over time.
One more. Univest has a lot of undeveloped lot land where construction would not impact views, values, and damage to existing homes and properties, where high-density home construction would be much more appropriate.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rue Marshall. I live at 7590 East Trader's Trail. I'm a native, born in Prescott, moved here in 2010. My major objection, and matter of fact, I have a question for Joseph. Joseph, what are the lot sizes supposed to be?
We'll get there, sir. We can direct the questions to me and all. We'll get back to staff, sir.
Okay, because I was told that with the new development, the minimum lot sizes would be sixty feet. The first twelve lots are fifty feet. The bigger lots that swing around that will have a view, and what they're actually doing is they're transferring the views that we paid for to all of these new lots down here, and I'm sure they'll be sold as view lots. I would ask that the Towning, the Planning Commission, and you people have a lot of power. Just look at it. Put yourselves in the position of the people that live there and say, is this really right for Stone Ridge? Because we tried to talk Tom Lowe into putting in custom homes two years ago, and he could make a fortune putting in custom homes, but for some reason, he just doesn't want to do it, and it's affecting a lot of people that live in the area. And I think it does violate the zoning code by reducing our property values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bear Schuman. I live at 7699 East Bravo Lane. I have neither offered business advice to Mr. Lowe, nor would I ever. He is quite capable of deciding what to do with property he is entitled by law to build on. I attended the meeting. This is my third master plan community. I so very much enjoy them because there are no surprises. I knew full well construction would happen here. In our governing documents, it tells me views are not protected, and I empathize with my neighbors and fellow residents of Stone Ridge, but this is a matter of law. The downzoning is particularly attractive, I believe, and I think the marketplace has changed. The apartments, the higher densities, I don't believe would benefit Stone Ridge. I know, in fact, your decision will be guided by the law, but I wanted to speak for how much I appreciate the way the hearing was handled, how amendments have been handled. This, to me, is how master plans should work, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Carey, and my husband, Tom, and I live at 1242 North Cloud Cliff Pass. We're probably one of the individuals greatly affected because we live right next to parcel B, where they want to put ten little homes on postage stamp lots, and then the parcel across the way that's going to get now, I think, Twenty-Four Homes. Anyway, I want to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak. Would you mind raising your hand if you've actually gone out and seen these two parcels in person, because I think it's very important to see them? Thank you, sir. Thank you, and thank you. I know not everyone is able to, but I think in this particular case, it's paramount. I also would like to bring up some flyers that will show you the type of homes that currently exist there. Ours is on the top. There are others following. May I do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You have spare time. You just need them. No spare time.
My concern, too, is, number one, there are lots of places in Stone-- sorry, lots of places in Stone Ridge where these smaller lots, high-density homes, are in keeping with the other existing homes that are there. Along Cloud Cliff, you have Six Hundred Thousand Dollar, Five Hundred and Eighty Thousand Dollar on up custom homes, and then, of course, Trader Trails, you'll see several in the five range. We really are concerned about how that's going to affect our property values. I know my husband and I, originally, were going to move into Yavapai Hills in Prescott, and when we saw the vision for Stone Ridge, we bought the home that you'll see on the top of that stack. Other concerns I have besides property values is, number one, I've brought to the city this safety issue, and I think that's a biggie, because both of those developments are going to empty out onto Cloud Cliff at the top of the hill, and the school buses transverse that at least twice a day, and there are two or three buses. My husband always, we go, "School bus, number one." Anyway, so that's an issue. Blasting concerns me, because we sit at the base of Lookout Mountain, and again, on the top sheet, you will see the mountain there. That mountain belongs to the city. If the excavation of the B section where the villas are going causes boulders to break loose and create damage or possibly bodily harm to anyone, there's going to be serious liability, not only on the builder's part and the contractor, but obviously on the city's part, and I'd hate to see that happen, because I really do love living here, and I think the city does a really good job. Other things I wanted to mention were construction hours. I'm not familiar with what is allowed in the city of Prescott Valley. Obviously, we are probably looking at a pretty long timeframe if both of these parcels are going to be developed. So maybe you-- So maybe you could shed a little light on that as far as what days they can work, what hours they can work. Will we have any peace for the next three to four years? And I think that's pretty much, the property value thing is probably of the greatest concern to all of us. The other thing that's unclear is elevations. In Section B, we don't understand whether they're going to cut it down, whether they're going to build it up, what exactly is going to happen, and I think it's the same situation for the other side of the street as well. You may realize that the city has had a park donated to them on that one parcel next to B, but if you're familiar with the land, there's no way you're going to be able to develop a park there. So the only open space we really have is adjacent to the trail, and that is not only used by Stone Ridge residents, but it's used by residents from other communities as well. We often see them because they'll park near our house and go up the path, and we are surprised that they come from other areas to enjoy it. So I know you've got a tough job, and thank you very much.
Time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Walt Mobley. I live at 1020 North Traders Trail, which is on the other side of the lots.
I'm speaking to the mic a little bit better, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Walt Mobley. We live on Traders Trail, I mean, on North White Open Trail, which is the other side of the development area. But I really have more of a question. My question is, what happens if you don't approve this change? Does it revert back to the previous zoning?
We'll definitely get that question answered for you and all the questions that you're, any public comment from public comment, we'll have those questions answered, sir.
So if I assume that it's going to revert back to the previous zoning, that means apartments in there. If that's true, then my concern would be twofold. One, there's going to be a lot more traffic. With higher density, you're going to have a lot more turnover. You're going to have people who are more transient than the current residents, and I really think if you don't approve this rezoning, then the resulting reduction in home values for the entire development is going to be much greater. Not to mention, I think it places a greater load on the city because historically and statistically nationwide, apartment buildings require more policing, and you're going to have a lot more traffic out there, so you're going to require more maintenance on the roads. So that would be my concern if you don't approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Brono McIsaac, resident of Stone Ridge. Just a few things that came up this evening, as well as from the community meeting that we had. I, too, am from Southern California, from San Diego, paid a whopping amount of money from my view, and certainly was not guaranteed that I would get that money back, which I did not, but I enjoyed it for 19 years, and that typically is the way that that goes as far as amenities are concerned. If those apartments are followed through from the 2004 plan, then you're looking at approximately 334 cars at least twice a day versus 68 cars on 24 homes and 10 homes. The fact that the folks up on Traders are having argu- over their view, the view of a multifamily building, which would be two, three-story, would give you far less of a view than if you have single-story homes. The houses up on Traders are not custom homes. The homes that are being proposed now are going to be running, when they're sold, around $200 a square foot, which is even greater than the houses that were purchased up on Traders Trail. The last meeting indicated that there was going to be about a nine-month project. I don't know if that's been addressed yet, but that's what we were told, is about a nine-month project. And the fact that Tom Lowe and company, Mike, and whoever else is working on this with the architects, they have done everything in a fashion that I believe has been one to beautify Stone Ridge, to care for the residents, to care for the safety of Stone Ridge, and to care for the enhancement of Stone Ridge as we go down the road. And that includes, since there's a great deal of retired folks in Stone Ridge, that included some time ago, a independent assisted living development, building facility there. So there are so many things that are being proposed by Tom Lowe, and this one certainly is at the top of the list as far as those people who don't want to have multifamily buildings. And I would be more than happy, if need be, to go around to a lot of residents that I've spoken to and ask for their signature, saying that they certainly would far rather have single-story homes than multifamily buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rothstein. I live on Rusty Nail in Phase 7, and I would just like to read into the record an email that I sent earlier to Mr. Scott. This is on behalf of my wife and myself. We want to register our support for the referenced applications of Stone Ridge Land Investments, LLC. Their plan for 24 single-family lots on the first parcel and 10 single-family lots on the second parcel is much more consistent with the general character of the neighborhood than the previously approved multifamily units that were part of the original Stone Ridge master plan. And just to go off text for a moment, I would comment that when we first saw Stone Ridge, we were very aware of the signs indicating what the developments might be in terms of multifamily residents. In all of our dealings with Stone Ridge Land Investments and Univest Land Investments, we have always found them to be concerned about the well-being of the Stone Ridge residents, and these requests for revisions to the original Stone Ridge master plan in order to maintain the character of the neighborhood are consistent with that concern. So we encourage the commission to approve the requests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more comments from the public?
Hey, Matt, how you doing? My name is Walt Nagy, and I am also a resident of Stone Ridge. I just, I want to set the record straight on a couple things that were commented on earlier. Diane, I love you, but Lookout Mountain is actually owned by our HOA. No, it's owned by our HOA. Now, there are 13 parcels that total seven acres that make up the little parking lot and trailhead and the pathway that goes completely around Lookout Mountain, but everything beyond those little 30-foot-wide parcels is owned by us. And I want to address the property valuation. Bromwyn did a pretty good job, but property values are based on square footage, price per square footage. Homes are going to be easily in the $200 per square foot range, and even though these are smaller products, they're going to be pretty expensive, small houses. Now, there's nine homes on East Traders Trail. Five of them are two stories, okay, which they don't even build and haven't in Stone Ridge for probably three and a half years. The market doesn't want two-story homes. The new homes that are going to be constructed in this parcel will not be comparable sales to these much larger two-story homes. My opinion. Thank you for your time, and hopefully you'll consider this well.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name's Brooks Slosser. I'm a longtime resident of the area.
Sir, go ahead and speak into the mic.
The map isn't even right up there. It shows-
Speaking to the microphone.
The map isn't even right up there. It shows the line going through parts of the trail. That's been zoned over to the city, and then there, six feet from that is where the wall line is, but there's no maps that show that. They didn't have elevations on all the lots. The piece of property that's left out on the far end, what's that zone for? Are they going to come in and put something in there, or is that going to be no man's land? How's that going to be addressed?
Like I said, we'll have staff answer all questions that are asked.
Okay. And the last thing is to tell somebody they only have five minutes to defend their home is right out of China and Russia, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? No, no double-dipping. Any other comments? All right. Seeing that, I'm going to close the floor to public comment and invite staff up to answer any questions that have been asked of the public, asked from the public.
First one is just to clarify that there's no rezoning on this action. The existing zoning is the R2 multiple dwelling units, and so certainly apartments multifamily is allowed by right, but it also allows single-family residential limited development. So they're choosing to develop a lesser product at lesser density, but it still is enabled, entitled for apartments. So again, if you approve this, this would, this would take away the development potential for apartments because you are approving it for single-family residential. It's not changing the zoning, but this plan would supplant the ability to do the multifamily.
So to just clarification and just for the record, if we do not approve this, Joe, the applicant could elect to build an apartment building on this parcel?
Correct. They would still have to come back again for some procedure of a preliminary development plan for the apartments, but they would have the right to bring that forward. The approval of this, this would only allow the single family, as indicated on the plan.
And so there were other questions about the zoning next to the property as well as lot sizes?
Yeah, I believe the plan indicates that, again, the average lot size is 5,000. He was correct, some of the lots are 50-foot wide, and the average lot size is roughly 5,000 square feet of all the lots, 24 lots. The, again, Track C, I'd explain, with this approval, only those lots are allowed, and so that indicated as Track C1 cannot be developed with any residential uses, but the developer has indicated that the final plat would indicate it either, it's either going to be HOA property or otherwise indicated as, you know, a drainage and open space, but it can't be developed with, when you approve this plan, that track cannot be developed with any residential, with any kind of development.
And there was also a question about construction times during the day. I don't know if the applicant-
If my memory serves well, it's been a while. I believe it's seven to seven, seven days a week, six days a week excluding Sunday. Seven to seven, six days a week excluding Sundays.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Any questions from the commission? We've already had public comments, so we can't, the floor is closed to public comment. So I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any discussion from the commission?
I think, Commissioner, I'd like to just make one thing. Stone Ridge has been kind of a unique development from its beginning, and one thing that it has always had is a mix of properties in each phase. As you go through each phase, there are combinations of, in some cases, in Unit 7, where it was 60 and 70-foot widths. In Phase 5, there's 50, 60, and 70-foot widths. And so that's a normal process in the project, and I think that, which several people have said, but I'm going to reiterate, it would be a much harder thing, I think, for the board to have to deal with two condominium or apartment complexes to get approved than to do the amount of single-dwelling homes that you're going to get if this is approved by the board and the town council. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Roberts?
The comment that I have to make is that we have a choice here. We have a choice of apartments or dwellings. I mean, that's because that's the way it's written up, so that's a choice we have because it's, it could be multiples. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify that.
Any other comments? Sir, public comment is closed. You can direct, you can direct questions to staff after the meeting. Thank you. So seeing no other questions or comments from the commission, I'll entertain a motion for PDP 17-009.
Commissioner, I'd like to put together a motion for PDP 17-009 that'd be approved with the conditions, the four conditions.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Also, I'll entertain a motion for PDP 17-010.
I'll also put together the motion for PDP 17-010 for approval with conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to our next action item, PDP 17-012. Upon the application of Universal Homes Construction, LLC, a request for a preliminary development plan for development and operation of Granville RV and Boat Storage Facility for HOA members comprising 57 spaces on an approximately two-acre parcel located on the west side of Prescott East Highway across from Thayer Street. And then, Joe, if we, let's just wait for the crowd to clear.
We need, I live over there. We need it.
And folks, please take your conversations out into the lobby. Thank you.
There's a choice. I would not go for the apartments. And again, all you have to do is, you need to listen. You can either listen to an apartment or you can either single-family as well. I was down in, to me, I would rather have to just stop that. For property value, for sure. Property value, for sure.
I think, Joe, go for it.
Thanks, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, the Granville Master Development Plan for 3,400 units was initially approved January 13th in 2000. At the May 11, 2015 meeting, the Planning Zone Commission approved and amended Preliminary Development Plan for the Northwest Phase, reconfigure the project north of Santa Fe Loop and west of Glass of a Hill Road, eliminating the previously proposed golf course and retaining the pre-declaration water rights for the original amount. Subsequent approvals for Final Development Plans for Units 1 through Unit 10C now totals about, totals 2,289 residential lots. Unit for home construction now plans to develop an area for recreational vehicle and boat storage, which will be deeded to and operated by and for the use of members of the Granville Community Association. The site was originally identified for this use on the approved Granville master plan, shown here. The R1L zoning district allows for community buildings and uses and provides, provided that such uses are conducted on a non-commercial basis. The site is immediately north of the Prescott Valley Solar and Water Tank Site. It is not immediately adjacent to residential uses. The RV and Boat Storage is operated by and for the Granville Community Association on a non-commercial basis. This site will be developed and landscaped in accordance with town code standards and will require approval of a final development plan by the town council prior to building permits. Staff suggests that PDP for the RV and Boat Storage is an appropriate use of this location, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and asks commission to make a motion to approve PDP 17012 with the condition.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions of staff from the commission? Commissioner Roberts?
Excuse me, what type of walling or, I mean, landscaping of the fence, is it a fence, is it going to be a wall?
It would have to be at least probably 85% of solid screening, screening. The front 10 feet of the property is landscaped with fencing behind that front 10 feet, and the remainder of the site would have to be screened.
Okay.
At least 85%.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Joe. Is the applicant here?
No, he's not available tonight. No, he's not available tonight.
Okay. So seeing that the applicant is not here, any comments from the public with regard to this application? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and/or motion. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve PDP 17-012 and send on to the council.
I'll second.
Movement seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Next item, number four, RP 17-010. Upon the application of Michael and Peggy Williams, MPW Family Partnership, a request for a revisionary plat to abandon the four-unit 4565 Preston condominium recorded January 28th, 2009, reception 2009-4289443, located at 4565 Preston Drive in Prescott Valley. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The owners previously requested approval of a four-unit condominium project that was approved by the Planning Zone Commission December 8th, 2008. Town Council approved a final plat for the 4565 Preston condominiums on January 8th, 2009, as recorded January 28th, 2009. Owners of all four units now wish to abandon the four-unit condominium plat and terminate the declaration order to sell the property as one fourplex on one original single-lot configuration. Abandonment of the condo plat and termination declaration will restore the original lot 1642 to new lot 1642R, and the fourplex will comply with applicable standards for the R2-4 zoning district. Staff recommends planning commission approve RP 17010 and forward to the town council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Yes.
Joe, are the Williams, are they owners of all four units?
Yes, 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 they are. So they would be signing the final development plan and plat as just one owner.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for RP 17-010, and remember, we have to forward this to council as well.
I'll make a motion to approve RP 17-010 and send on to the council.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Next item, number five, RP 17-011. Upon the application of James W. and Lola Chalice, consideration of a visionary, visionary, visionary plat Exhibit B to reestablish two lots on Unit 19, Lot 7748R, located on the east side of Verdi Vista Drive approximately 350 feet south of Elk Circle. Joe, do you have it here?
Yes. The common lot line, again, between Unit 19, lots 7747, 7748, were first adjusted by our visionary plat RP 06-03, approved in April 13, 2006, because a residence, existing residence, had been constructed across the common lot line, and that was done before the visionary plats were required, 2009, 19, 2004, I believe. Again, so the combined lots, the lot line adjustment placed the existing residents all on one lot and created a separate lot. In 2012, the owners then, the current owners, Chalice, requested a visionary plat to combine then Lot 7747A and 7748B into one new, larger combined lot. The RP was approved January 24, 2013. Owners now wish to, again, reestablish two legal lots, one that meets all the requirement, one that meets all the required setbacks for existing residents, and one vacant lot, also in performance of the R1L 10 zoning district, being at least 10,000 square foot in size and retaining their original frontage on the cul-de-sac area. Staff recommends the commission approve RP 17011 and forward the same to town council with a recommendation of approval.
Any questions of staff? All right, seeing none, is there a motion for RP 17-011?
I'll soon move it.
Second? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
This time, Vice Chair Rankin will do the call in public.
The call to the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
After the meeting is over, you can speak to staff about anything, yes. Do you state your name, sir?
My name is Henry Putman. I live at 7438 East Green Vista, Prescott Valley. I stand before you tonight to voice my strong opposition to the proposed changes to the zoning in the remaining undeveloped area of North Viewpoint. I just purchased enclosed escrow on my new home in North Viewpoint in September, and there was zero disclosure that there was a planned zoning change for the area directly behind my house. I was informed that if this property were ever to be developed, it would indeed be single-family residential property. I am vehemently opposed to any type of zoning change that would alter my view of the valley beyond single-story residential-type construction. I purchased my home with this as the understood master plan, and I expect that this will remain unchanged. It is obviously up to you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the town council to make absolutely certain that this remains a reality and that the zoning not be changed to accommodate the greed of land developers. There are many reasons why a zoning change is bad for Viewpoint and Pronghorn, including but not limited to density issues such as increased traffic, crime, pollution, air noise, trash, et cetera. Water is the area's biggest single population growth concern, and any change to the current zoning restriction endangers the available precious resource considerably. Additionally, multifamily housing will have an adverse effect on every current individual property owner's valuations. This fact alone should give the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council pause, since you have a fiduciary responsibility to those current property owners over that of the developers. Finally, I urge the Prescott Valley Town Council and Planning and Zoning Commission to consider strongly any zoning change and how it might affect the future makeup of the boards. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the commission's information, we will be hearing this item next month. I can go into further detail, but we'll be hearing it next month. Thank you.
My name's Michael Kellon. I live in Viewpoint, and I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman before me. There is no way you're going to be able to build roads to get people in and out of there. It's already starting to be jammed up there. You can four-lane Viewpoint from wherever you want to. It's still not going to help because there's still no way to get into Prescott Valley except for Robert Road or Glassford Hill, and it's going to be a mess. I wish you would completely reject anybody's idea of putting multifamily housing in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please just remember, I mean, your comments tonight, we really, we're not doing anything tonight with regard to this application, and we will be discussing this application at our next meeting. So you can, you can comment on it, just please just know that we can't do anything this evening about it.
And then to find out when...
Yes, give me a second. Unless anything's changed, we will be hearing this item on December 11th.
My name is Pat Weigel from Viewpoint, and I'm just here to voice my opposition to the proposed changes to the zoning in the remaining undeveloped area of North Viewpoint, in particular, the zoning for multifamily housing. I believe that multifamily housing will have an adverse effect for the area. We wouldn't have bought our home over there if we knew that apartments may have been built, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Alan Mayer. I live at 7086 Prairie Hill, also in Viewpoint. I realize you're not addressing this tonight, but I just wanted to offer another opposing voice to this. I've been a resident for six months, and I specifically asked what was going to happen with this parcel land, and I was told it would be built out of single-family dwellings. If I would have known it would be an apartment complex, multi-filament, I would have never purchased.
Thank you, sir. And because, folks, because we, it is not on the agenda, we really cannot discuss it this evening. I can't even comment or really question, you know, ask, you know, ask you questions and so forth and respond to things. Again, this will be heard on December 11th. That's when I would truly encourage you to come and speak your piece and go from there. Like I said, I can't really, we can't really do much tonight.
Okay. My name is Wanda Porkin, and I do live here in Prescott Valley. I do have a question regarding next month's meeting. If you could address this, please. So the topic is going to be the actual rezoning of that parcel into multifamily? Is that what's going to be discussed next, next month? And if so, will the rezoning be voted upon, yea or nay, that it goes forward at this meeting? Or how is that really going to, what's going to, what's going to really happen next month?
Ma'am, because, because this, because we don't even have any information on this public, this, this hearing item, I would ask you to contact staff.
What staff?
Community development staff for the town of Prescott Valley. We don't have a whole lot of information. I was just told this morning that, yes, something, this application will be heard on December 11th, but we really don't have any information to really provide you at this time, so I would advise to contact community development.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the proposal will be voted upon next week or next month?
Yes, absolutely. And...
I'm sorry. You know, we are members of this community, and saying that questions are inappropriate questions can be answered, and I appreciate your time, but I'm sorry you...
But we can't work, ma'am, because this is not on the agenda. We are not able to comment or anything, and I would advise you to definitely call community development.
Yeah, just for, to my situation, you're here to take public comment?
Comment, yes.
Respond, can you answer questions? You can direct staff to look into it, but you aren't able to take public comment on something that's not on your agenda. Put rocks and tools forward.
So I would, again, advise you to come back in December.
I'm just going to make comments. I realize you cannot comment, but I want to state that the information that was sent out by the owners and the HOA was very deceptive because it did not have accurate information.
Again, ma'am, I would just encourage you, because we don't have any information, you're kind of preaching to the choir because we don't know anything about this. This is not on the agenda. It will be heard December 11th. I encourage you to please come back at that time and address your concerns.
So the residents don't know about this December 11th meeting. How are they supposed to find out?
And that's where I will make a public servants announcement. I strongly, strongly encourage people to go onto the town's website, pvaz.net, look at meetings and agendas. Also, while you're there, please look at the general plan, Vision 2025. A lot of what is being discussed at this commission, on this commission, on an almost monthly basis, is covered in that plan. That is our basically guiding document. So please, read that document. Take some time to read that document, but also take a look at our website, pvaz.net, and that is when you can get meetings and agendas for any meeting that the town holds, including planning and zoning.
My name is Lynn Holland. I'm a resident of Viewpoint, and I am opposed to the proposed rezoning. Okay.
Appreciate that, but again, I would, again, I'm going to cut you off because...
I have a question. I would like to ask, is it possible that agendas are available at meetings? I used to work for a planning commission...
Typically, your meeting, or agendas are back there...
Oh, I looked and I did not...
Unless, unless they went, just people, we just probably didn't have enough copies.
Okay, I just wanted to know if agendas are available at the meeting.
Yes, and agendas, like I said, are also available online. Please print them out and bring them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With regards, with regards to your December and January meetings, online it states that there will be no meeting.
It hasn't been posted yet.
I'm looking right at the website every day.
But that's what I encourage, just take a look.
I encourage you to, to study or reconsider anything that has to do with this 150-acre and the smaller parcel in question, to set it aside until after February.
Again, sir...
When you guys come back from your holiday break, February 2018, do not do anything within that timeframe.
Sir, can you get your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Michael Hudon, H-U-D-O-N.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned.